For the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of justice for all.
Sorry, Johnny didn't mean to mess you up, but it's back because we had the screen down and I forgot to put it back.
I'm glad to see our assessor got the memo for color code.
Oh, yeah. All right, thanks for coming, everybody. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
First thing on the agenda is a public hearing for our 2425 budget. I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the 2425 budget at 6:01 PM.
Support. Support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing for the 2425 budget. Is there anybody that would like to comment or say anything about the proposed budget? One, two, three. Okay, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the 2425 budget at 6:02.
Support. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we'll move right to bills payable. I will entertain a motion.
We'd like to make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $305,574.93.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the supervisor's report. As reported last meeting, I met this past Friday with the head of Eagle along the Senator Hotel, and I think we were with him about five hours, somewhere around there. Took his director, his name is Phil Ross, took him around the township. He's never been to this area before, and like most people, that aren't, they're very impressed, I mean, of our beauty and our natural resources. Showed him the old club and some other sites that had, were dealing with wetland issues. Showed him where we wanted to put the algae plant behind San Souci, and we talked about that. And we basically, and then, you know, we had a couple spots on the mainland, ended up at Cabana Blue, and really stressed to him about the perception we have of there's an overreach of Eagle at times on what people want to do. And the places we showed him, quite frankly, pointed that out. You know, where this guy had a house, he tore it down per state building corps, raised it up with sand to grade, and Eagle said, oh, underneath where your house was is wetlands, and made him actually create wetlands there. And that, where we took him at, definitely raised a few eyebrows. And so, and I did also stress to him, Eagle uses, they have these things called best management practices, they say BMPs. And I stressed to him the fact that we are being, our permits are being evaluated under the same best management practices of those of an inland lake. And we don't have the same ecosystem as an inland lake. Our water is flowing and it's moving. And he actually did agree with that. And after the fact, myself and Senator Hertel received a lot of good feedback from the director and that our message was well received. And so hopefully, hopefully something will change from it, at least nothing else, awareness of it. Him and a staff person was, she'd never been here before, didn't even know what this area, anything like. We also had some pretty good conversations about frag mighties too and the issue here. And there, he was very interested in that too. So, all in all, I think it was a good tour, and I'm hoping that it will do some good. Talked to Brian Roy at the wastewater treatment plant, and he said that Elginak actually has done some lining projects on parts of their, of their collection system, and he's seen reduction of flows coming from Elginak, which was good. I was going to talk to him, see if he wanted to do another tour, you know, open up to the public if they wanted to do a tour of the wastewater treatment plant. I'm sure he wouldn't have any problem with. I know we did it before and had to change the dates a few times, but we settled on it. A few people did show up, so. I was going to talk to him about that, and I was going to try to get him at one of our meetings. He couldn't come tonight, he's on vacation, just to give us a report. Blue Bill Bridge, pre-construction meeting. Construction's going to start around July 15th. I'm going to put it in the newsletter, and it goes to those roads, so that's a good thing. The original plan actually called for, they're going to split the bridge in half and build one half, then the other half, like they did on Merrill Street. But actually, the contractor asked if they could put in a temporary bridge on the, as you're going in, on the right side, I guess, the north side, and that's going to be the plan. And it's going to be a one-way bridge, and it's going to operate with a light, just like it did on the Flamengo Bridge when they redid that. You remember that, right, Kristi? And the temporary bridge, it will have the same restriction as the existing bridge has now. So they're not going to, you know, there'll be no changes as far as the weights or anything there. I made sure that our fire trucks and our garbage trucks and things can get over the temporary bridge, and they said with no problems at all. So it's going to be done, start July 15th, around July 15th, and the completion date is going to be around October 26th. And the total cost of this bridge replacement is $1,157,318. After all the federal, state, and county grants we've received, the township's share of this is going to be whopping $7,149. So saving us, the township, over 1.15 million dollars for this. And like I say, it's a local bridge, it would come out of our, our general fund, and we wouldn't be able to do it without that. So today too, I wanted to tell everyone, we've received a positive, or a positive consent judgment on five blighted properties, they're by the same owner. And it's with an attorney, and where their home slash office is on M-29, and four other properties. He has 28 days to clean the mess up. And it's very specific, what he has to go, and if they're not done with 28 days, the township will have the right to go on the property and remove all the blight and whatever is left on the property, and then put the cost on his tax rolls, on the tax rolls. And I wanted to give kudos to our zoning compliance officer, Roman. Our attorney says he did a phenomenal job on this, and very, very accurate and concise, and he did a great job to help with this judgment, so good job, Roman.
What property is that again?
What?
What property was that? Which property was it on?
Well, I don't want to say specifically. I can tell you later.
All right.
I think everyone can guess.
Okay.
Working on, we're working on with union negotiations with the MAFF and the FIRE. Quite honestly, it's been very frustrating, and we are going to go to mediation. And we're waiting for the mediator to set a date on our next meeting. Typically, they're pretty busy, and so we're going to have to wait a while. I was hoping to get this thing banged out a lot sooner than even today, but it's not going to happen.
How many times have you guys met?
With the union?
Yeah.
Three times. And, you know, we have five other unions, and we usually settle within one or two meetings.
Okay.
But, okay. We received three quotes for a new planner. We're going to have to decide by the end of October. We have Karen, who worked under Steve Kasten until then, until the end of October. So actually, right now, we have a lot in the middle of it. I hate that, you know, we need her to finish up, like we have a question on a cell tower and a few other things, wouldn't you agree, Mark?
Yeah.
So I'll spread those, those three different quotes to everybody.
Are they retiring?
Yes. Yeah.
And she's, the planning commission should be there.
Right. So the other two, or the other two anyhow, I'd like to have them come in there so we can, we can talk to them a little bit and just see what we think. Okay, working on several projects stemming from the ARPA funds workshop. It's a little disappointing, we're supposed to get a quote from, with an estimation of the cost of repaying the colony tower, and I did not get that. So once that comes in, I'm hoping in a day or two, I'll share it with the board on what the estimation of it is. But that's, that's the only thing with the ARPA money that's kind of out there, and still. County Beach update, they, their engineering is done for Phase One, and they're going to have a ribbon cutting sometime in mid-August, and the contractor's going to start on Phase One in August, early September, with a finish date in December. So it'll be fun to, good to see some action there. Just want to remind everyone again, the fall cleanup weekend is September 21st on the mainland, 21st and 22nd on the island. And then we were talking about, well, it's actually part of one of our resolutions, due to the elections, we're looking at, we, we have a logistic problem of where to put our meeting, because this will be all tied up, set up for the election, and so will the alliance hall on the island. So I contacted, and I think it'd be fun, we could have our meeting at the Elginak Clay Maritime Museum. And if we choose to do that, they, they said they would open up the museum earlier so we can all go through it. It's a wonderful place, if you've never been there. And they'll even stay up after, you know, a while to, for people to go through it while we're there. Music in the Park is rocking and rolling, started last week. We got four more dates now that moves over here. We skip a week during the Pickle Tournament, and we have four dates with bands that are scheduled on Harson's Island at Brown's Field. I partook, had the honor to partake with Boat for Vets last Saturday. You know, I love boats, and I love vets, you put them together and you're going to have a good time. But we had about, I'm guessing about 140 vets showed up, and about 35 volunteer boats. And what we do, we all put them on, you know, all the vets jump on different boats, and go for a nice, nice boat ride. We usually go around Harson's Island or wherever. And then we come back around 2 o'clock, and they have a wonderful meal at the VFW. And I, it's truly one of my favorite things in the, in the summer to do. Kudos to the Elginak men's baseball team and the women's softball teams who made it to regional, to regional play. So that was a good honor for them, they had good runs, so go Reds. And that's all I have for that. Okay, go, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments?
You know, I always have something.
Yeah, sorry, my table's still in the way there.
Good afternoon, Cindy Pilato on behalf of San Souci Downtown, Inc. Just wanted to make a quick mention that our first and will be annual road rally was a resounding success. It went off fabulous, and we have our winner here. The, the other thing I wanted to bring up is we, SSDI is now in a position to pay our half of the sign, so we just want to, I don't know who we, we just bring this, make it out to Clay Township, bring it to you, Kristi?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. What I haven't heard, and maybe I missed it in the last meeting, I know that we had requested that potentially the ARPA funds that were originally allocated for the sign that weren't now being used be somehow designated to the island. Personally, I would like, or we would have liked to have seen them go to the island firehouse, fire hall somehow. I don't know if that has been, if you've already allocated those funds.
We haven't had a meeting on that, but.
Yeah, so, yeah, if that can be, if those funds can somehow be.
Yeah, we're going to have to have another ARPA meeting once we figure out where everything is and what's left.
Okay.
But we did approve for George to buy a new mini pumper.
Yep.
For $305,000.
We, we'll, we'll put that five more thousand to that.
Yeah.
Or the doors, right? The doors were something, they really wanted to replace the doors.
Yes, yeah. So, you know, I would, again, we would just really like to see that additional, those additional funds left on the island, and the hall is obviously always in need of something, so that would be great. And that's really all I have, so you guys have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad it was successful.
It was.
And your fashion show was good, too.
The fashion show? Oh, no, the boutique.
Oh, the boutique.
That wasn't ours, we were just the catfishery of that.
Oh, the Cattails did that.
Cattails did it, yeah. We, but that's the catfishery of it.
Okay, good.
Have a good evening.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? No more public comments. Okay, moving right along to the consenting agenda, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the reports for May payroll. Board approved checks of 6:3 EFT in between meeting, the draft minutes of 6:3, and the draft minutes of 6:13.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
I just went on the EFT, what was that check written for?
That's wax for the fuel.
Fuel.
Police fuel.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, new business, the water, Elginak Water Plant, they need air actuators. They got three quotes. Total amount is over $111,000. This is part of their, of their capital improvement plan, and they actually had an amount of $200,000 in their capital improvement plan to go towards this. Clay, our responsibility under our agreement would be $71,647.48.
So was this replacement already on schedule?
Yes.
Capital replacement?
Yes.
Okay.
Says they only got two bids, ain't, not three?
Oh, okay.
And they didn't show us the other bid, and we owe over 60%?
Yep.
So that's different from the 35, 35, 30, which was the.
No, that's the.
That's the sewer.
Yeah, this is water plant, it's 62%.
So we get most of the water, 62%, okay. Do you know how close the other quote was, or who it was?
If you'd read your board packet, the next page has the comparison.
Yep.
I've got it here, I printed it all out, I didn't see it.
Yeah, there's a comparison.
This here, this, couldn't understand it.
There's a bid tabulation right here, it says Midwest Power Systems on one side and Weiss Construction on the other.
I wasn't in my packet, because I printed everything out. Is this it here, the fee estimated for? Oh, here, it's that one, okay.
It was in my packet.
Weiss, I see it, I missed it. It's quite a bit higher.
Yep. So they did good. I'll entertain a motion if someone would like to make.
We'd like to make a motion to approve the Elginak Water Plant air actuators in the amount of $111,949.19, of which Clay Township's responsibility is $71,647.48.
Support. Okay, a motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here, yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving right along, we have Resolution 2414, it's a performance resolution we have to pass every year, so we can do work in the MDOT right away.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 202414 for performance resolution for municipalities.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
So what, you said we can move right away with anything with MDOT? I don't understand.
Let's put in the water main.
Oh.
Yep. It allows us to work in the MDOT right away.
And we approve this over here.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I don't remember this.
Next, we have 202415 to set our meeting dates through the end of December.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 202415 for the board meeting dates.
Support. A motion and support. And if you notice, August 5th is the one at the Elginak Clay Historical Society, so. Any more, any discussion on this?
Is November 4th to be determined because of the election?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to see another one on Harson's Island. Is that going to be in the other six months? Because we usually do at least two, I think last year we did three on the island, didn't we?
Couple, but we can do that in the spring, too. I mean, it's whatever the board's pleasure.
Okay.
So I think the purpose, right, was you don't necessarily want to set all of the meetings going forward as a board, because this may not be the same makeup.
Right.
Past the December 16th date.
I get that, I know you don't want to go to the island in the winter, so.
That's kind of what wasn't forecasted out, I believe that was some of the intention.
Correct.
I mean, would you be opposed to doing maybe October 21st on the island, do another one on the island? We usually get good support from the people when we go there.
Yep.
So.
It's a board decision, doesn't matter, you know, I don't mind going to the island myself, but I'm open.
I'm a little busy with election time, but that's, that's me.
On October 21st, yeah.
Yeah.
And 7th is quick after August 19th.
I have a lot going on between August and November.
Now, though, with elections, you have three elections. You have absentee, you got early election, and then the regular election.
How about November 18th, then? Still not too ugly as far as snow goes.
I made a motion to pass this resolution, so, and it was supported, so this would need to be voted down before.
Yes. So.
Well, I was just asking if you might want to amend it.
Let's put it up for hope. And if we want to amend it, we'll have to reject this one and then amend it. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
No.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes. A motion passes. All right, next we have to set the annual salaries for deputies. And basically, like everybody else in the township, we raise them 4%.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-16 to set the annual deputy salary.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
So explain to me the stipend of $800, and who is this going to?
It's a salary for the deputy clerk and the deputy treasurer, it's the same one that we pass every year. And then there's also additional pay per election for the deputy clerk.
So the deputy clerk, you guys are both your own deputy, or I don't, who's the deputy?
How long have you been here?
Sorry, I don't know.
You don't know how long?
I don't, I don't know, I've been here three years.
You don't know who our deputy clerk is?
No, I don't know who backs up Cindy.
Okay.
She steps across the hall from her, Janice.
Okay, okay, it's Janice.
By law, they have, the state requires the treasurer and the deputy to, or the treasurer and the clerk to have a deputy, by, by law.
Can we just put it all together, why are we doing the stipend along with the?
Because you can't put it all together, because that's illegal. Their pay for their deputy pay is separate from what they get paid hourly, which is under a union agreement.
Okay, well, if it's what we've been paying every year, I guess.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes. A motion passes. All right, next we have to set the annual salary for FOIA coordinator, which we are also required to have, aren't we?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 202417 to set the annual salary for the FOIA coordinator.
Support. A motion and support. Any discussion?
Probably hard to figure out, how many, how many of those requests do we get a year, I wonder?
A lot.
It's hard to say, probably, but.
Between, what, three and five a week? Two and five a week?
What?
During an election?
Yeah.
Just for, three to five.
Yeah.
I would say three to five a week.
Three to five a week.
That's a lot.
Yep.
Seems like a lot of work.
Yep. That's a hard $3,276 to make.
She keeps up on it, Cindy does.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have 24-18 Resolution, set annual salary for Parks and Rec coordinator.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-18, set the annual salary for Parks and Rec coordinator.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-18, set the annual salary for Parks and Rec Coordinator?
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hiltonan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Motion passes. All right, next we have a request for the Elginac Baptist Church for fireworks on August 12th on 8543 Marsh Road. They usually have this every year. And Chief, you go out there and check them out right there. It's really not that big of a display, is it? So, but, you know, permits should go before us and that's what they're asking for.
And they do this every year.
Yeah.
Every year. I'll make a motion to approve the Elginac Baptist Church fireworks display on August the 12th, 2024.
Support. Okay, with motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Oh, no, I can do this one. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have set a public hearing for our budget. We're going to have two this year. And we have it on our June 27th meeting at 10:00 a.m.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the budget for June 27th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m.
And it's going to be here at the Township Hall.
Support.
Here we have motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll go right into board member comments. Cindy, you have anything?
I want to thank Roman. I know he's working really, really hard over in our code compliance, zoning compliance office over there. He's killing it, so keep up the good work. And other than that, absentee ballots go out on June 27th-ish, give or take a day. That's all I got.
Kristy.
I have to go?
Sure.
Oh, okay. We are working on the summer tax rolls, so right now we're scheduled with our printing company for bills to go out on July 1st. So looking forward to those hitting everyone's mailboxes.
Yeah. Chris, got a PSA for us?
Today goes out to our blight officer, our FOIA coordinator, our Parks and Rec, our deputy clerks, all the people that, the deputy treasurer, all the people behind the scenes that make this township great. They don't get camera time, they don't get microphone time, but yet they come in and do their job each and every day. And what's, it's, it's the value of this township or the people. And I'm grateful for them and everybody have a great and safe summer.
Thank you. John, you got something?
Yeah, kudos to Roman. Keep up the good work. Thank you for what you do. It's election season in Clay Township, which is always interesting. And I would just like to ask the township voters to do their research in their due diligence. There's a lot of things being thrown around, social media, in the mail and what have you. Just do your research so when you go and vote, you're an educated voter and you know the truth about what's going on in Clay Township. That's all. Stay cool this week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maureen?
Yeah, it's hot, all right. Well, as I told you guys, I'm going to be getting that email out to you and we all need to be concerned about that situation. And have a good 4th of July. I guess we won't see you until then, other than the budget meeting. So thanks for coming.
Mark?
Okay, I have planning commission meeting on the 26th. One is on Green Drive. It's Weaver's Market going from C3 to R1. The other one is Point Trumbull, which is the drive-through over at the Elginac Video Store. I guess they're turning it into some kind of a restaurant or whatever it may be, but it's a drive-through and a little bit of concern for that. And patio application for Capri.
Okay, for outside service?
It's nice.
Probably.
It's a patio for, for entertainment and diners.
Okay. Thank you. I'd just like to say, like everyone else, kudos to Roman. This guy goes above and beyond. And, you know, I forgot to mention to him, last or a couple, I don't know, it's probably three, four weeks ago, we did the cleanup for the township. And he took it upon himself with his own truck to probably take in a half a dozen, eight loads for people that knew that they were kind of physically challenged and having a hard time cleaning up their stuff and was blighted. So he took it upon himself to, on his day off, to do trips and help clean up our township. So, I mean, it's, it's nice when you get some guy that's, or someone that's passionate about our township working for us. So kudos to them. And I'd like to just say, too, what Chris mentioned, our staff is phenomenal. There are so many times I'm out and about and I, someone will go, hey, Artie, I had this problem and so-and-so helped me out and, or this person helped me out. And they were great and everything. And that's what they all do. They, they try to help people get through problems and stuff. And, I mean, we, we have a phenomenal staff that works great together and makes our job